Buena Vista, Colorado. The date is November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, and the time is six oh one. The purpose of this work session is to, is for the board to be informed about the building code changes from the county level. So, uh, listen, Joel, are you introducing this one?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thanks to the board. So every now and again, the county, which is our contracted building, building department, review, building safety department down there. Every now and again, there's a change to the billing code. And the county goes forward with that process and the town also has to adopt billing codes from time to time. And so we defer a lot of our thinking about this to the county so that they, because they are the experts in this. And so they come forward and say, in this case, we want to adopt the twenty twenty-one I series, international building code series, plumbing, electric, et cetera, et cetera, that Pat Green can talk about. And so, um, they come, Pat's going to present some of the kind of higher level components of this, the proposed changes. These changes are not obligatory, but it certainly makes it easier if the jurisdictions within Chaffey County all kind of operate at the same, same level, right? And so generally, like the last time we adopted, I think, the twenty fifteen code, we were pretty much in line with, with what the county did. And anyway, so it's not like, oh, you have to do this for the trustees, but yeah, but consider what the Chaffey County is recommending. The, uh, the process overall is Pat, you know, Pat Green is the director. He'll come tonight. He'll give us a presentation. There'll be lots of opportunity for questions and answers. Then we have two readings of the proposed changes. So the first reading will be on the twenty-eighth of November with the draft resolution prepared. And the second will be on the twelfth of December with that same draft resolution changes as, as we see fit. And then the idea is that the code will go into effect thirty days after the publication. You know, that order. So anyhow, so Pat Green is here to give us kind of a rundown of the process and where are we at the county and other jurisdictions, et cetera, et cetera. So I'll turn over to Pat. Thank you so much for your time tonight.
Oh, you're welcome. You're welcome. So my name is Pat Green. I'm the, uh, I'm the current building official for Chaffey County. Uh, our, our department is the permitting and inspection side for the unincorporated parts of Chaffey County and also the municipalities of Buena Vista, Pontchar Springs, and Salida. Um, as Joel mentioned, we, uh, we go through the code cycle. The last adoption we did was of the two thousand and fifteen I codes. Uh, we did those in approximately March of two thousand and eighteen. And, um, we're now proposing to adopt the twenty twenty-one series of I codes. Um, there are always changes to the codes and there's quite a few changes this year based on not only the, the different code cycles, but also some state mandates. And so one of those, one of those first mandates was the state mandated that anytime that you do a code adoption, that you were obligated to adopt one of the three most current energy codes. Chaffey County in, at all is, is currently under the two thousand and six International Energy Efficiency Code, which would not be one of the three most current. But, um, and they gave you some options that if you could adopt your codes prior to July first, um, you could adopt one of the three most current. And if you did it after July first, you had to adopt the twenty twenty-one. Uh, then certainly we're following after July, after June thirtieth. So we, we were obligated to adopt the twenty twenty-one energy code. And we'll get to that in a minute. So the way we set up these, and keep in mind, these are proposed amendments. These are what we presented to the Board of County Commissioners. They are kind of on the same timeline as Joel mentioned. Our first reading with the county will be, um, November twenty-first. And the second reading will be December twelfth, uh, at the commissioners, at the commissioners' meetings. Uh, so they still have some time to change things. Again, these are what we are presenting to the board. Um, and, um, they always have the option of, of making their own decisions. We're strictly proposing what we think that should be done. Um, in, in the packet, the way, the way that we've constructed this, everything that's in the packet is, is a proposed amendment. The ones identified in black were our carryover amendments, amendments that were done in the two thousand and fifteen series of codes that we want to continue on with. Um, the ones indicated in blue are new amendments to the twenty twenty-one series of codes. So, um, a lot of it is carryover and, and, but there are quite a few new things. Um, a lot of the, a lot of it is redundant. It pertains to all the codes. It was just done to clean up some verbiage. Everything in here, in, in the codes that refers to Board of Appeals, we changed to call the Board of Review. That's how the county identifies their, their review board. Um, so a lot of that is just things like that, identifying the Chaffey County is the agency, code official, building official. They have some things like that. So we can certainly go through and kind of hit the highlights. It's a large package. Um, if there's anything that you want to specifically stop and talk about, or we can have questions at the end, however you want to handle it, that's perfectly fine with me. Um, so we'll kind of skip to the first section we have. We, we did in this, and a lot of these amendments will change to multiple, apply to multiple codes. So it, it could be in the, in the building code. It could be in the residential code. It could be identified in the fire code. Um, so a lot of these will be the same thing. You'll see them on here multiple times, but each code has to be identified. Under, under work exempt from permits, we, we added some, some words to clarify and try to eliminate some things that have been going on in the county. Um, so, um, one-story detached accessory structures, less than a hundred and twenty square feet in a commercial application, don't require a permit. But we added that these structures shall not be used as habitable spaces, sleeping rooms, or for vehicle storage. Um, and a lot of people have occupied sheds. Um, and so we've identified that this is a, a code requirement now. And it gives us some teeth if we have to do something legal to get them to move out of their shed. We've added some definitions. Uh, we added a definition of a sleeping room that wasn't, wasn't in the code before. And we have defined a sleeping room or bedroom, uh, and herein defined as a habitable space, which may be used for sleeping, which contains a closet sixteen inches or greater depth, an emergency escape and rescue opening, and a smoke alarm. Uh, that will give some clarity. Mainly this is, this is for the county where we use a number of bedrooms to size septic systems. Uh, and that comes into play. A lot of times people, you'll look at the plan, it looks like a bedroom, and they think because they wrote den on it, that it's going to be a den. So, you know, the, the code says a, a sleeping room, a potential sleeping room. And so we've identified that if you have these features in there, we're going to call them sleeping. Um, we, we kind of gave the, the address section of the required address things. Um, got rather lengthy and we, but we've tried to make it clear for um, emergency services of where you have to have your address posted. It has to be visible from the streets running the property, those kinds of things. So they, people, they need to be found. And especially this is important when we get a lot of ADUs that are located in the rear, where they need to know that, that, they need to know which structure they're responding to. Uh, and so, uh, we've made this clear. The exception for the alteration of the character height and stroke with requirements may be approved by the Fire Protection District having jurisdiction authority. Chaffey Fire sells the little green signs that you see all around that has house numbers on them. Their process doesn't meet the code requirements. So we put this exception in there for them so they could still provide those signs and sell those signs. Um, I think they have three-inch letters. The code requires four. So they wanted to still be able to provide that service. So we made that exception for, for the fire district. Um, I flipped pages quickly when I do the computer. Um, we, uh, no, that's important. Uh, we moved, uh, the ground snow loads, the ground, the, where we determine ground snow loads that hasn't changed, although we did change some verbiage in here and it's white and blue. It'll still be determined by the Chaffey County snow, uh, snow load back zone and the elevation of the snow load table. Um, most of Buena Vista is below eight thousand feet until we head west towards Sunset Vista. Then that gets a little bit higher and they have to have a, a more stringent frost depth. Um, trying to hit the highlights here for you. Working, that's really basically it for the, for the building code. We'll drop over to the residential code. We have added the addition of some appendixes. The appendix chapters in the codes are only in play if you specifically adopt them. And there are some things on here that, uh, in, in the codes that we think would be helpful to be as a code item. There's things, for instance, sizing of, of gas piping and turn exit terminal location of mechanical systems. Those kinds of things are, are pretty important and we think it was, it was important to make a part of the code. So we've decided to, uh, to adopt those appendixes or propose to adopt those appendixes. Um, there are some, there are some conflict, conflict things in here. This portion, this basically says that there's a conflict between the code and the National Electric Code, that the electric code will, will prevail. Uh, and that will be into play unless we come into the model codes, which we'll get into a little later. Um, the state legislator wrote that the model code preempts everything. Um, we have the same exempt for work permits in the residential section. We did add another section, number eleven, to be exempt from a permit identified as temporary membrane structures such as canopies or tents, tents used for residential events. Um, technically, they would require a permit. We didn't want to get into the process of weddings, graduation parties, have an attempt put up, requiring a permit. They're generally up for, you know, a short time, but, you know, twenty-four to forty-eight hours. And we didn't believe that those should require permitting. These are put up on the weekends when we're not working to get put up and taken down before we're around anyway. So. Um, we identified our, our refund policy. Um, we've always had a refund policy, but it never was identified in the, in the code section. Um, so we outlined our, our refund policy so that it's part of the code. So people know, um, it is available, but there, what you get back depends on where you're at in the process. Um, we put that in there. We've added a couple of inspections for the damp proofing and foundation drains where they're required. They weren't required in, in, they, in the codes specifically, uh, but they are part of the inspection process. And, um, this way we can get away from them. Well, I didn't know I had to do that type of comments. Uh, under the definitions, we added, uh, a couple of more definitions in the residential side of the code. We still have the sleeping room definition. The other two, I don't think you have the most current version. So I'm sorry. I apologize for that. The Colorado Division of Housing, which regulates factory-built housing. Legislature again, uh, put this forth to them and they identified you can tiny home and tiny house. So there's a difference between the two. Uh, so we took their definition. We put it in the, in the code. Um, and it's specific. So I'll, I'll go through them because apparently you don't have that copy. The definition of a tiny, of a tiny home will be a dwelling that is permanently constructed on a vehicle chassis, is designed for long-term residency, includes electrical, mechanical, or plumbing services that are fabricated, formed, or assembled at a location other than the site of the completed home, is not self-propelled, and that is four hundred square feet or less in floor area excluding lofts. A tiny home may be installed on a temporary or permanent foundation. So if you have a, a factory that is producing tiny homes on chassis and they are part of the Division of Housing inspection process, uh, they will go through their process. They will be, be stickered, uh, just the same as, as a, uh, as a modular home would be. Um, their sticker will be pink and it'll, it'll come out and, and that'll be, that'll, uh, it'll be an approved type of dwelling. Um, a tiny house is a dwelling that is four hundred square feet or less in floor area excluding lofts. And a tiny house may only be installed on a permanent foundation. Uh, the difference in that is, um, Appendix AQ talks about tiny houses. And there are some items in that appendix that give you some relief as far as means of ingress, um, ladder requirements, access to the lofts, um, placement of the, of the sink, um, those kinds of things. So, um, that's the two basic definitions. They control over, over those two different types of homes and where you would allow them to be controlled by your planning department. Um, tiny houses most likely could go anywhere that are, that a regular house could be built in, in town. Um, tiny homes, um, probably are going to be restricted to um, areas more like a, a mobile home park or a specific tiny home village type of, type of thing. So, um, we may not see too many tiny homes, um, in the county. Salida has a tiny home village, um, south of town. I guess it's kind of south and east of town. Um, but those will be, those will be identified by your planning department where those will be allowed. But this gives us a means to, um, inspect the tiny house, the tiny home. Um, the only thing we would be inspecting on a tiny home would be, um, utility tie-ins, water, sewer, gas, other things.
Can I ask a quick question?
You bet.
A difference would be, so the, um, home has to be on the chassis, but a house does not?
A house, a house cannot be on a chassis. A house can only be on a permanent foundation.
Okay.
A tiny, a tiny home can be on a chassis or a permanent foundation.
Or, okay.
Yes. So tiny, a tiny home can be either or, a tiny house only on a permanent foundation.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Um, the manual J design criteria as part of the adoption of the energy code. Manual J S and D will now be required as a part of your submittal, uh, with your, um, building permit application. If you have a gas-fired heat appliance. Um, this is a, uh, manual J is a, is a system that, um, helps to determine what what size of, of basically what size of furnace that you're going to have. Uh, manual D is duct sizing. Manual S is, stands for sizing. So it comes into play also. So manual J is, was put into play so that a, uh, oh, let's say an eighty thousand BTU furnace would, would adequately heat the size of house you have. Um, but the, the heat guy says, oh, you know, just in case, let's make it a one fifty. So the manual J wouldn't, wouldn't allow to do that. Um, you're going to have to put in the right size unit. Um, and that's, that's part of the energy code requirements that, that, that will be, that'll be required. Um, again, we, we propose to carry over to eliminate the, uh, the requirement for having sprinkler systems in residential units. Um, we don't, uh, we don't believe we want to get involved with that at this point in time. The, um, we, we adopted that in the last, in the last code cycle. We, we propose to do that again. Um, we identified, um, the carbon dioxide, uh, alarm locations. Um, the, um, the code actually said within, within proximity of a sleeping room, and we identified proximity to be within fifteen feet. So, um, we wanted to put that in there and make sure that, that they understand that, um, that it has to be within fifteen feet of the interest of a sleeping room. And, um, or in a bedroom if it contains a fuel pumping appliance. Address information again is the same. Um, our, the, the footing, the footing requirement is going to be the same. It basically says it has to be, footings have to be designed by Colorado licensed architect or engineer or be designed and constructed in accordance with the Chaffey County Minimum Footing and Foundation Adoption that's contained in Exhibit M. This is the same footing design that we've adopted. This is probably nineteen ninety-six. Um, and so, uh, your options are to follow our design for foundations or have an architect or an engineer design your system for you. Um, we've added a section, um, on, on flashing, uh, exterior decks that a water-resistant barrier shall be placed between the deck ledger and the structural substrate. Um, we've had a lot of deck ledgers, um, right, attached directly to the wood and draws moisture, eventually causes rot, and you could have a, a deck failure. And so, um, water-resistant barrier, it could be, um, it could be a Tyvek, a Tyvek-type product. It could be a, um, it could be a, a flashing, a galvanized flashing. It could be a, um, a felt product, anything to, to give a break between that ledger and the, and the house structure. We have again deleted, um, deleted the section of unvented gas log heaters. Um, we don't allow unvented gas heaters of any type in Chaffey County. So we omitted those from the, from the codes. Uh, the piping materials under gas, under copper and copper, copper alloy tubing. Um, this was put in at the, at the request of Atmos Energy. Um, their gases is what they refer to as a wet gas. And it does have some problems eventually with copper, copper alloy tubing. So we have, um, have put in here that the copper and copper alloy piping shall not be used on natural gas systems. It can still be used on LP systems, but natural gas, it won't be allowed any longer. Um, and again, unvented roof heaters are not allowed in the county. Um, the plumbing administration, some of these we put in are just carryovers. Uh, the Colorado State Plumbing Board, um, we're, we are charged to enforce their rules. Um, and they make amendments to, to their rules. Um, so these are not all of their amendments. Um, but, um, these are the highlights of, of their amendments that, um, that we are obligated to enforce. We just identified them in here to make sure that, um, plumbers and homeowners during their work are aware that these amendments exist and they have to follow them. Um, some of this doesn't apply. Uh, we don't do sewer inspections of Buena Vista Sanitation. District takes care of those, but we added a section for the county to, um, talk to sewer lines and don't leave, don't leave the twenty-four inch depth requirement. Again, dwelling unit fire sprinkler systems are not required. And the use and application of non-potable water systems shall comply with the laws, rules, and ordinances applicable to the jurisdiction. Chaffey County does not have a, a gray water system in place. The state allows gray water to be used, but only if this jurisdiction has a gray water system or, uh, um, permitting process in place. At this point in time, Chaffey County does not. I believe it's on the horizon. I believe they're going to be, be working on it. Um, and, um, identifying the use of gray water systems. I don't think we have too many in, in town because everybody's tied into municipal sewer. But in, in the county, it comes into play in some places that it may be useful. Um, that's basically it on the international residential code. The next one we have is the fire code. Uh, we have, um, talked with Chaffey Fire and they seem to be in agreement with our proposed amendments. Um, and basically what we have done is that the, we have put in that the fire code shall not apply to structures governed by the International Residential Code, specifically one and two family dwellings and townhouses, or those agricultural and other buildings exempt from building permits. Um, so the International Residential Code will, will prevail over the, uh, fire code in these instances. Um, and we put in here the creation of the agency. The Chaffey County Building Safety Department is established as the authority having jurisdiction with respect to the structure-related portions of active permits. So in other words, how the buildings are built. But the Chaffey County Fire Protection District and South Arkansas Fire Protection District are hereby established as the authority having jurisdiction within their respective boundaries for all other provisions of this code, specifically including fire suppression, supply requirements. So we don't get into fire access, fire, fire supply, water, fire hydrant spacing. Those kinds of things are all left to the fire districts, um, within their own jurisdictions. Um, basically this one says that, uh, the Chaffey County Building Safety Department is responsible for the issuance of construction permits in accordance with the requirements of the building codes as adopted. When conflicts between the building codes and the fire code requirements for application, issuance, posting, inspection, and enforcement for construction permits occur, the adopted Chaffey Code building code shall govern. So the, the building code shall govern, uh, all of the things basically that pertain to residential um, requirements, uh, as, as far as the fire code's concerned. Um, we again, this quick definition on where it says residential group R three, um, buildings that don't contain more than four, this are, are to be sprinkled. Um, so you can build a fourplex, um, and not have to sprinkle in a building. Uh, anything more than four units would require sprinkling, sprinkling, sprinkling. Um, portable fireplace is open, open burning organs is, is controlled by, um, the ordinance two eighteen dash O three, which I think is actually enforced by the Sheriff's Department. Um, again, the same address notification. There's an exception in here for fire hydrant locations and distribution. Um, talks to fire hydrant spacing and it gives an exception that the fire chief may grant an exception to fire hydrant spacing requirements when in the opinion of the fire chief, they're extenuating circumstances and the increase of hydrant spacing does not limit suppression capabilities. So there could be some instances where they can't meet the fire, the hydrant spacing requirements per the letter, but the chief has the ability to, um, get around those a few things that won't, uh, hinder the fire suppression. Um, fire apparatus access roads, I don't believe we have any in the town that, that requires. Uh, the fuel gas code, um, same amendment to the copper alloy tubing. Um, CSST, uh, CSST is corrugated stainless steel tubing. Um, it's kind of a, it's not kind of a, it's a, it's a do-it-yourself project. Um, it's a flexible product. It has a very thin membrane wall. Um, it can be easily damaged if it's bent too sharply. Um, it's penetrated by nails very easily. Um, and so we require that, um, if you're going to install any CSST in a project that you are certified to install it. Um, and so we require you to provide us with that certification if we go to a project to see that that is being used. Um, piping testing has to be, has to be inspected and tested prior to being placed in service. Um, we put in a, um, repairs and additions. Minor repairs and additions are not required to be pre-tested, tested, provided the piping is accessible, limited to a maximum of eight joints, and it has a total developed length of not more than six feet. Sometime on remodels, you have to be able to get piping around things. So we've, we've allowed the eight joints come into play to where you could kind of make a U. You can have two joints at each turn. And as long as it's less than a six-feet length of pipe, we don't require that to be tested. Um, that's, again, wanted us to be clear on this. And they've been requiring this, that gas piping or equipment that has been out of service for a period of longer than six months shall be permitted to be placed in operation only after the piping system has been inspected, tested, and purged. Um, so if they go out and have pulled a meter and it's been out of service for more than six months, they're going to require that owner to, to test that piping system again and make sure everything is, is airtight before they will go and set the meter. and make sure everything is is airtight before they will go and set the meter. And that's again, existing piping is disconnected. For gas meters, gas tanks, it's the same same requirement. So they wanted that in there just to make sure that that piping is still in good working order. And again, unvented roof heaters are prohibited. The mechanical code. Really, not any changes really too much to the mechanical code. Kind of adopted it as it is. The plumbing code, kind of the same thing. Basically, it says whether if there's a conflict between the building code, the residential code, and the plumbing code, the plumbing code will prevail. A lot of these deletions are what the plumbing board was also identified. They previously in the code, air testing on plastic parts wasn't wasn't allowed. And that was pushed through because when you get in environments like we have with our winters, water testing is not always a great idea, just because of the freeze. And so air testing is allowed on plastic piping. This is this is one that I'm sure Sean will have some say in. Under inspections, it says the premise owner or responsible party shall have a backflow prevention assembly tested by a certified cross-connection control technician at the time of installation, repair, or relocation. So if someone installs a backflow preventer on their system, it needs to be inspected by a certified technician. I'm sure the town has one. We do, we do not, we are not certified to do that, and so we put that in there. If it comes up, you know, we'll be able to say, you need to have this signed up by somebody in the know. That we deal with sanitation. Then we get to the energy code. The energy code's going to be a big one. We're jumping from the two thousand and six to the twenty twenty-one energy code. Every year, there's been multiple changes and previously, we, there was a lot of things that previous administration didn't feel were was necessary. And now we're going to get jump to it, and it's going to be a big pill for the contractors to to grasp because there's there's a lot, there's a lot in there. The B O six book was about this thick, and the twenty-one books about this thick. So it's it's a lot. We're going to, we're going to try to hold some informational classes. We've held, we've held one webinar in Salata area. It was pretty well attended, just to kind of get the basics. There's things that are coming into it. Lower door testing is required now, duct testing is required, ventilation testing is required. And those are all going to be, those are required to be performed by certified testers. We have put out a memo identifying what we believe will will accept as a certified tester. I I believe that we're going to see a decrease in forced air heating systems being placed in service just because some of these requirements. But I think that's kind of where we're going in the future is going to be electric, electric heat, electric fire boilers or heat pumps. And I think that's what we're we're being pushed towards. Our options with the adoption of the twenty twenty-one energy code was to adopt the code as written or to make it more stringent. We did not, we did not propose to make it more stringent. We think it's 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 pretty, it's pretty stringent. There have, there were some public comments at the Board of County Commissioners meeting with the asking for the addition of what is referred to as the Electric Preferred Amendment. The commissioners have not have not made a decision on that yet. I look for them to make a decision on the twenty-first, at the twenty-first meeting. The quick synopsis of the Electric Preferred Amendment has some has some things in there that if you have a, if you have a mixed, they refer to it as mixed fuel, but if you have a mixed fuel building, excuse me, which is basically has a building that has gas in it, you're required to do some additional things. And if you have an all-electric building, you get some credits for for some things and don't have to do as much. So it's it's a it's a push towards electrification, which the model codes are pushing that already. But I I think we're about fifty fifty right now that I think whether that's going to be adopted as part of this or not. If you want to learn a little bit about the Electric Preferred Amendment, you can go to a website. You can just Google in SWEET. I think that stands for the Southwest Energy Efficiency Project or Partnership. And they they were instrumental in in writing this Electric Preferred Amendment. It's been adopted by a few jurisdictions in the state. Northland is the one that they generally put out there. Doesn't give you a lot of information, but it does kind of tell you the direction we're heading towards. The energy, the energy code, the changes are going to be, our values have changed. Glazing U values have changed, they've increased. Electric requirements have have come into play. You're going to be, other than a few exceptions, bathrooms, hallways, kitchens, I believe, all other lights are going to be required to either have occupancy sensors or dimmers, those type of things. So a lot of that is going to come into play. There's a lot of exterior ceiling that that comes into play. So there's there's going to be, there's going to be a lot in the energy code. And, you know, we're going to be learning as we go, and we're going to be doing the best we can do. Yes.
Pat, are are all of these applicable to new builds and renovations? But is anything about this retroactive?
It is not retroactive, so so you know, we can't go back and put better windows in their house. So it so it applies to new construction. It applies to alterations and additions, things things like that. There's always a lot of talk that if you, you know, it used to be the fifty percent number. If I don't do more than fifty percent of the work, then I don't apply, but it it does. There's no percent that that applies to. So so if you do an addition and you add four windows in your addition, those windows would have to meet the requirements, or your older windows or existing windows would not. But it'll it'll apply to to any new structure under under permit. And there are, there are, there's a section, the energy code is broken up into a residential section and a commercial section.
It also applies for sale sales, right? Like if you're selling a house, you buy a new home, you'd have to like get it up to code or anything like that?
You do not. You do not. Well, let me back up on that a little bit. As long as, as long as any work that you were done was was permitted, inspected, and approved. If if you if you buy a home that has unpermitted work or unfinalled work, the the violation stays with the property, so you're buying the issue. So it could be, and if and if it was a nineteen ninety-three, it was the last time you got an inspection, then yes, there are some things that that you could be required to do to file out that permit. We would we would require you to put in smoke alarms and CO detectors. That's one of the big things. We would require you to have emergency escape and rescue windows. But we wouldn't make you rebuild your staircase because those requirements have changed. So there is some, there is a little bit of latency in there, but we try to stay away from the method of rewarding someone for not getting a permit. So, you know, if you if you choose to not do that, then there are some are some consequences and some things that that you that you do have to apply to do. The existing building code, no, not, no changes. The property maintenance code, that was, that was a new code that was adopted in this two thousand and fifteen series of codes. It has some some teeth in it when we need to do some enforcement for some properties that are in disrepair, and we have to have some something to be able to force them to do some things. The swimming pool and spa code is don't really have any any changes, any changes to that. And that is almost the extent of the building code changes. The next is exhibit K, which is the Wildlife Urban Interface Code. It doesn't apply to the municipalities. It only applies to the unincorporated areas of Chaffey County at this time. This is, this is going to be adopted as part of the county adoption. Building in the county is going to have some requirements in it that you will be required to have. Well, based based on the Chaffey County wildfire risk map, your property in the county would be identified as either an extreme hazard, a high hazard, or a moderate hazard area. And based on that, there are fire things that you will have, that you will be required to do to build in the county. Ignition resistance siding, some specific driveway requirements, turnarounds and turnouts for fire trucks, defensible space, some things, some things like that. Along along with this, the state legislature mandated the creation of the Wildlife Urban Interface Board. And that board has been tasked with coming up with a set of regulations by June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four that the state will will adopt. And jurisdictions will have ninety days to then adopt that and put it into play. And we don't have any idea of what that's going to entail at this point, what that's going to entail the entirety of Colorado. Or it's going to be municipalities will have the ability to do their, to do their own thing or be exempted from it. Aware that they, on the horizon, and it could, it could come into play. All exhibit K will apply to you, or exhibit A one. The rest of it, exhibit L, is just the basic outline of the trade permits for electrical, mechanical, and plumbing. The outline of building plant review fees, and then the addition of our exhibit N is our footing foundation design and the snow load zone and elevation maps. And that's our proposal amendments for that. We can certainly do any questions and answers you might have over that before we'll speak about the model codes a little bit. If anybody has any questions.
I guess, well, my question is, and it might pertain more to town, but like if when all this is implemented, how far along in the process? Quite a few things in the mix. This happens all, you know, thirty days after whatever it was, the end of November. The, you know, where does it fall in the process for potential developers that are planning things out? Are they already developing with the idea that they should be prepared for code changes? Or what point in their planning do they need to be like, okay, I got to do this, not what I maybe originally thought?
Right. There is a notice on the website that, you know, building permit that this is coming. We've kind of set an internal deadline of December eighth, and so if we receive things by December eighth, that will process those, get them into the county before the end of the year, so that'll be under the current one. And then things that come in after December eighth, we'll do our best.
At some point, yeah, the counties.
Once it's in the county, it's in the county.
Our 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 process is going to be that anything that is submitted to us prior to the enactment of of the new codes will fall under the the old code section. But we're going to require that to be a complete submittal. So in other words, if you you know, you you can't give us two pages of your ten-page plan set and say I've submitted. It's going to, it's going to be required to be a full submittal. And part of that full submittal includes sign-offs from municipalities. So, you know, the the process is that they're they're building in the municipalities, they submit to the municipality, the municipality does their planning and zoning things, their sign-offs, and do all the requirements that they have prior to coming to us. So, you know, they can't just drop it off to us if it's being built in Beano Vista and and say, well, I submitted, so it's not going to work that way. So it's completes the middle. And and they will fall into the old code. So we're expecting a big rush between now and the next, you know, four weeks. And so and and just because, not only, you know, it may add some cost, but just because I think it's fear of the unknown. You know, I don't know what they need to do that right now, and and they don't know what they're going to have to do. And and so, and I understand, that happened to every code, every code cycle. The last, the last time we went from the sixth to the fifteen, and there were some changes in that also. So, you know, honestly, in my opinion, the building code portions of the code adoption are are not going to be that bad or that hard to get around. The energy code stuff is is going to be, is going to be tough, and the the model code is is going to be, is going to be tough. But, you know, those are, those are both given to us by state mandates. So we don't really have the choice in that, and and we've just got to deal with it. So, and it's statewide.
It's important, but I asked this question a few weeks ago, so I just want to follow up with you. You know, I saw here with fire code that, you know, referring to fire district and some of the things, but are some of the codes that are added in here taken into consideration? Like some of the studies of the Marshall fires, one of the things that I think came up quite a bit was like wood fencing in densely populated neighborhoods, it was a major contributor. So was any of that kind of considered in some of these building changes?
Wood fencing, wood fencing is not. You know, there are, there are some things in the in the Wildland Urban Interface Code. And you're right, a lot of this, I believe, was was as a result of the Marshall fire, the big push anyway. But, you know, there are, there are some things that that, you know, you can't build in the defensible space unless you meet those requirements. So, you know, wood fencing, wood fencing, if you're going to be in the county wildlife, wildland urban interface area, that that probably probably won't happen. And again, you know, I don't know what they're going to come up with later on. That may come into play. I don't know if they I I, we don't know what their mandate is going to read. They're they're working on it. It's it's a mix. Their board is a is a twenty-one person board with a mix of fire people, building people, cone official type people, and and it'll be interesting to see what they they come up with.
I have a question, Pat. With regard to detectors that are required to be in homes, you've got fire alarms and and carbon monoxide alarms. Are there also any provisions for radon?
They're they're not, not in the code itself. Radon is talked to as an appendix. And we haven't adopted that appendix for as a radon requirement. Some places have, I believe, and I'm not positive, but I believe the Real Estate Commission has something in their requirements regarding radon testing with the sale of property. But I don't know if I'm a hundred percent correct on that or not.
Okay, thank you. Other questions from trustees? Sorry?
Yeah, no, I'm good.
Okay. Well, thank you, Pat.
That's the big one.
Oh, there's more, oh, more. Okay, good. We're going to study this one.
I'll talk quick. So so the state, so the state has put out what was referred to as the Colorado Model Solar and Electric Ready Codes. These were adopted by the state, I believe, on June first of twenty twenty-three. They gave us six months to put it into into effect. I believe these are required to be adopted as part of your jurisdictional adoptions. They basically three section to it, to this, there is the electric ready, the solar ready, and mixed, it talks to mixed fuel. So basically, some of these requirements are run, run the same or parallel some of the energy code requirements. And a lot of these things have already are And a lot of these things have already, uh, are in into, into play. Uh, but the quick synopsis is that, um. For electric ready, any, anytime you have a a mixed fuel building. Um, so for instance, if you put in a gas range in a new structure, you're required to also wire for a future electric range.
Right.
Uh, so any, any gas appliance, um, uh, water heaters, boilers, uh, ranges. Anything, anything that is served by gas is also required to be made electric ready. Um, so there are, um. Wiring requirements and space requirements, so you would have to have space for an electric water heater unit. Um, along with being ready to, um, to wire it. So those, those are all in there, electric vehicle, um. Charging capabilities are also a requirement. Um, they'll be, be required to have one of those per bay in in a, in a garage. Um, there, you're not required at this point in time to have them installed, but you are required to be wired for those to be installed. Um, so piping to it, wiring to it, lots of times what we're seeing now are, they're being wired for it. Um, and blanked off everything happening except the actual plugin being put in. There's also a solar ready portion of the code. Uh, the quick synopsis of it says that you have to have. On a, on a single family residence, you have to have a three hundred square foot area of clear roof space. Uh, available for future solar. Um, that roof space, within two feet of that roof space, there cannot be any pipe penetration, so. So you can't put any plumbing exhaust vents through there. Um, chimney vents, any of those type of things, driver vents, if they're, if they're to the roof. Those can't be in that three hundred foot identified area. That area will be required to be put on your plans and plants middle. Um, so that the inspectors will be able to go out and say, you know, you can't do that. Um, there's a reduction, uh, I believe for townhomes that that cuts that down to a hundred and fifty square feet. Um, but solar ready, we also will entail, um, piping from the panel to the. Solar installation area so that it could be wired for eventual solar. Um. So there's, there's quite a bit in this, in this report that the state put out that mandated. They also had the wisdom to say in their report. Something to the effect, I won't be able to find it right now. But that. With regard to the International Building Code, the International Residential Code, um, the Energy Code. That this code shall prevail. So they, the state said, all the other codes can say what they want, but we have the last say. So every, everything will be, um. We'll go by this a lot and so we're trying to go through this, um, the only thing we got. Was, um, we got a, we got a copy that's called explanatory notes that the state put out. Um, you can, you can Google those, the, the things in blue. Are the explanations that they, that they gave us to say, this is what we intended it to be. There's a lot of stuff left in here that is going to be left up to the. Uh, authority having jurisdiction to to sort out. And, uh, we don't have, there, there is not a board or a panel or anybody to. Go to, ask questions of, refer to, so. Um, here's what you got and figured out. Take your time, you got six weeks. So, so, uh, it'll, it'll, it'll be, it'll be interesting and, um. Um, but, you know, we're mandated to do it, so, so we'll do what we got to do. And that, I believe, is all that I have. I hope it was clear and. And precise and I, I believe, and I know Joel had mentioned that, um. About what you're required to adopt and I, I believe, and you, I'm sure you've read and checked, I think the I, the IGA. Um, just requires you to to follow along the path of Chaffey County laws. So we're adopting, so that we're enforcing one, one set of codes. We don't have the Buna Vista code, the Salata code, the county code. Um, Ponte Springs had had done ordinance or an amendment, uh, a few years back that says, um. Um, they don't, they will, um, they will adopt and abide by whatever Chaffey County, uh, adopts and, um. We, we were very happy that they did that. We, we would wish the other two would also do that.
Yeah, you'll see, we like, uh, a lot of code language changes that are coming because we specify every code, every. So, the. Our process, but follow them.
Right, and and your pro- your process, you would, you would look at your second reading around December, the middle of December, December twelfth, okay? All right, and then your, your code says it goes into place thirty days after that?
After publishing it.
Okay, okay, so that would be, uh, in effect, it would go into effect January twelfth?
Uh, probably the thirteenth or fourteenth.
Okay, okay, all right.
Thank you, Pat.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Pat.
You bet.
Appreciate it.
Never a dull moment now. To the races.
Well, I've got some white reading.
Thank you. So we will take about a three minute break. And.